Regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, June 15th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Cleveland McFarlane, St. Peter Missionary Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Come on. May we pray. Our gracious God, we come now and we thank you for all of your many blessings. We ask that you bless this city, bless our mayor, and bless our city council. Help them to do those things that are proper. Help them to do those things that are pleasing in your sight. We ask it in the name of our Christ, we pray. Amen.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
He'll be here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Morning.
We first would ask that you would turn off or silence all electronic devices. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in, indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, a public hearing, agenda item, before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that each speaker state clearly for the record both your name and your address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM prior to the, on the Thursday prior to the Tuesday council meeting in which you'd like to speak. Your subject matter must be identified and be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hasn't given that proper notice to the clerk's office will not be allowed to address the council on a non-agenda item. Speakers are granted three minutes. A bell will sound to indicate the end of the second minute, which indicates and means you have one minute remaining for summarizing. The second bell means all your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we are appreciative of your continued interest to your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of June 8th. Still move?
Been properly moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Well, good morning. Good morning to see everybody here this morning. This past weekend was a great weekend. I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to come downtown, but it began Friday night with Art Walk, which was probably the largest art walk we've had, maybe in the history of the city. But lots of fun, lots of activity. You know, as I think I've told you the past, if you like to roller skate or watch roller skate, watch roller skating, I highly recommend that you come and join us at Art Walk. But there was also the inaugural event for Saturday at the Cook, which is a concert that we'll be having every Saturday night at Cooper Riverside Park throughout the summer. And both of these events are an indication, especially the second one, Saturday at the Cook, are an indication of an increased effort to improve programming at all of our rec centers and our parks, so that our citizens can find things that they enjoy doing on the weekends and really throughout the week. And I want to congratulate Director Shonda Smith on all that she's doing, you know, to make that happen, she and her team. So, thank you very much for that. This morning at eight o'clock, we had an opportunity to roll out the city's plan, what we call in people first, for the consideration of the city council. This is a plan of how the City of Mobile could spend the $58 million that it's received as part of the American Rescue Plan. We have a kind of a short window here between now and the end of the summer to determine how that money will be spent. The, in the American Rescue Plan, it's very specific about things that can be spent for and things that cannot be spent for. So anyway, we will engage with the city council over the coming weeks to make sure that we are spending that money in accordance with the plan and also to make impact in the City of Mobile. Very excited about that. You know, we continue to hear comments about trash, people not knowing when their trash is going to be picked up. I double-checked between meetings, and it's my understanding that every night and during the day, you know, we have posted a map that shows exactly where the garbage will be picked up the next day. Now, we will endeavor to look at that, to see if we can better communicate it, so that you know when to expect someone to be in your area to pick up your trash. Now, as of now, we have eight new trash trucks in production. You know, if you recall, we told you that we ordered those trucks more than a year ago, approximately a year ago. And they were back, they were delayed in receiving them, and that had something to do with us falling behind in this most recent trash situation. But now, we're in the process of catching up, and with the private contractor that we have that's been hired to help us catch up, the idea is that we want to catch up and stay up. That's the intent of what we're doing to serve you in that area. Many of you may know, especially those that have school-aged children, we are having some summer camps. This is the second year under Shonda that we are having summer camps. There's some misinformation in the public, some accusations out there about what we're doing, so I've asked Shonda to please come and explain exactly what we're doing with the summer camps. So, Ms. Smith?
Morning.
Morning.
So, I want to start off by addressing two concerns. The first one is the seniors as well. There was a question regarding seniors being picked up. At this time, we are still in COVID phase for food, so we are delivering more food than we normally do year-round. We had to make a choice, do we pick up seniors or do we deliver food? The priority was food. Come August, the food delivery should decline, and then we will be doing regular delivery and pickup of seniors during that time. I also want to say that I'm actually disappointed that I'm having to address this. I take pride that I am accessible via text, email, phone calls, whenever there's questions regarding the summer camp. So, we, this is our second year. Unfortunately, COVID shut us down last year, so we were not able to do it, summer camp. In the past, we, our centers were open, people were able to come in, there was no structured camps. Kids just came in daily, did what they were going to do, and they left. There's been a call for people requesting for summer care. Summer care is very different, because neighborhood kids come to the center, they can come and they can leave whenever they want. Parents want structured camp, meaning I drop my child off, I know where they're going to be, I know someone is watching them, and when I come and get them, I'm going to check them out of camp. So, those are two different types of camps. Because we have over 12 centers, we provide a mixture of all of those settings throughout our camps. So, at five of our sites, we have structured camp, meaning it starts at 7:30, you drop your child off, you check them in, they don't leave without us knowing, we have structured activities, it's theme-based, so we're doing art, STEM, and education. When you come, they provide lunch, they get breakfast, when you pick them up at 4:30, they are the same way you left them. We also have other camps, which means you can come when you want to, there's no organized activities, it's open whenever you want to. The third camps we have is we partner with other agencies. So, I believe it's Harmon, Hope and Figures. We work with Boys and Girls Club at one site, and then we have Light of the Village, thank you, that comes in. But again, it's not all day, it's from 12 to 3. So, you come from 12 to 3, that means that's the neighborhood kid that walks there, when they finally get up, they come and participate. We wanted to make sure that we were able to assess all people for camps, that they wanted to be able to come and participate in. And when we did this community engagement probably about two years ago, the goal was how do we impact everyone? So, we didn't want to make all 12 centers a shutdown camp. So, for example, Spring Hill, we consider that the adult camp. All of our fitness activities that was happening throughout the week at these other locations, we moved them all to Spring Hill, so that people could still come and get their fitness and their yoga that they were doing in the morning, it's still accessible to them at the Spring Hill Center. But I think that kind of answers the question. We do have programming available. We do make sure that if any parent addresses us and let us know that it's in concern, that we make it available. I would tell you, when we first started the idea about the camps, it was our staff who said, "How do we address kids that are in the community?" And I said, "Well, how do we propose that we address that?" And when they come in, we make accommodations. We have some kids that come to the camp, we've never met their parents before. So, we know we can't ask for money. So, what we do is, okay, well, we're going to ask that you pick up trash. So, I believe it's sweat equity. So, it's putting in time to do those different things, and we do not, or we've never been in the mindset to turn kids away from camp. Hope that answers your questions. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith, would you come back? I have received numerous calls from parents regarding the Fickers Center and the Sullivan Center, saying that, that children couldn't go in because they didn't have $50. Is that, is that the case?
Not that I'm aware of. So, I called some of the centers and talked to the facility supervisors and asked them were they turning kids away, or what was the issue that's going on? And they said they have never had a kid that come, that they've turned them away, that they've worked something out. And I can only tell you what they tell me.
I called-
So, if those parents are calling you, I would appreciate if you can direct them to me, so I can figure out how I can address that.
Well, let me get this straight now. If, if a child shows up at Fickers Center, that child can enter that center, can go in without paying?
Yes.
Okay. That's not the information I've received. I was told that they had to pay $50 a week.
So, I would tell you, at Fickers, that is not our organized camp. Light of the Village is there in the middle of the day, so in the mornings, there's no camp there.
Okay, what, so, when the camp start, whatever time the camp starts, then can the kids come in?
I'm not, so-
You said there's no camp there at the same time of the day. So, I want to go to the time that the camp is there. The time of the day that the camp is there, then can the kids from the community come in when that camp is in session?
Yes, and they can participate, and our goal is that they participate in those activities that are happening, yes.
Okay, and they don't have to pay nothing?
No. Money, no, but there is going to be some activity that, again, that they provide some kind of service. So, you don't, you can't pay, we understand that. So, this is also important about teaching accountability, and when kids come in, how do we get them to be a part of the activities that's happening?
So, you're saying they're going to pay one way or the other. They either going to have the money, or they're going to perform some service. I want to say that the first community center built in the City of Mobile is the one in Trinity Gardens. The first, we had recreation centers prior to that. We had no community centers prior to that. So, when I got City Beach G-Funding, enough to build the center, I made, I went to the mayor and said, "I don't want a recreation center, I want a community center. I want it to be a safe haven for the kids and for the family. I want them to be able to go at any time." So, the city didn't put one dime of the taxpayers' money into that center. It was built by HUD, with HUD funds. It was built in low-to-mortgage-income neighborhoods, because those are the kids most likely wouldn't have nowhere to go. So, the idea that either you pay or you work, I'm not for no work, I'm for leaving the kids alone, let the kids come in and play. I'm not for trying to figure out what, what it is you can do to make up for their $50, I'm not for any of that. I'm just telling you personally, as a council member, it's for, it's for folks who don't have nothing. So, you show up with nothing, then you got to do something, because the folks that got something, they don't have to do nothing, because they are paid. It was built for children and people living in low-to-mortgage-income neighborhoods. Let's say, just say, who can qualify to come into the summer camps?
Who can qualify?
Yeah, what, do you have, what is the criteria for, for kids coming into the camp?
There is no criteria.
So, I can, I can be, I can live on Saraland Avenue in Saraland, and I got $50, I can come into the camp?
Camp, the center, yes.
Camp not built, camp built for people in low-to-mortgage-income, so what I'm saying, you can let people in another city come, be in the camp, and join the camp, and folk living there, they got problems. They either got to come in and work, or they got to do something. It was built for, for low-to-mortgage-income citizens. I can come from a rich home with my money, and I'm in there fast and free, and the children don't have anything, then you come in on conditions. These are your conditions. If you don't follow these conditions, you go back home. It ought to be, it's a safe haven, it ought to be open to the children. That's my position on it. No cri, no criteria, no, no work performed, let the children in, that's my position on that.
So, I want to make sure that there are two points of clarity. What Councilwoman Richardson says, Mr. Chairman, is just a suggestion, but he's not directing an employee, nor can he. You know, we do understand that.
I stated my, listen, I stated my position. My position had nothing to do with a directive. I stated my personal position. I didn't state the mayor's position, I didn't state nobody else's position. It's my position. I'm not trying to give no directive. I'm stating my position.
He said that.
So, what I want to make, that's exactly what I was saying, is he's not giving a directive, he's just stating his position.
And I'm not putting no gun on nobody either, since we're making, getting everything straight. But I'm saying, it's not necessary. I made my statement clear.
So, the second part of what I was saying is, is this. So, when you're dealing with CDBG funding, you don't, you don't necessarily have the restrictions that we're talking about. Every, everybody who comes to the center is allowed to be there. We will let them pay one way or another. Some, some form of payment is due, and that's, that's a directive that comes from Director Smith. And she has to figure out how to make sure that we're continuing to run the center in an orderly fashion. There was no order beforehand. We have it now, but no child is being turned away by the City of Mobile. I want to make a point of clarity, when we dealing with these funds or other funds, we're not turning any of the children away. We're making sure that both the children who come there from internally in the community or otherwise, and it's the community center, that they're not being turned away. The whole point is that they all get to be serviced, and that is our effort. We've talked about this at length, but I want to make sure that there, you all know that there's no restrictions on this building, even if it were dealing with a particular form of federal funding, when it comes to what we're doing or not doing with these children.
Mr. President, I have a quick question.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, for, for coming. So, the only payment that is due is for the camp hours, is that what I'm understanding? Because the rest of the time is basically free and open?
Correct.
Since we get some questions, would it be possible for you to just to let us know if we have recreation centers, especially in our district, maybe what the hours are and what the programs are, so that if anybody asks, we'll be able to tell them?
Yes, I can send that to you today.
Thanks.
I guess, Ms. Smith, my concern is this, because I've heard you state pretty fervently that no child is turned away, especially as it relates to lack of payment.
Correct.
And I know sometimes you can have an objective, kind of 90,000 feet looking up, and it not reach into the buildings. So, is, is that understood by the program directors, that they're not to turn young people away, and that other accommodations ought to be made for those who don't have resources to pay for the camp?
Yes, from my, and I, and I agree. So, I wanted to call and talk to facility supervisors to see what was being said. What they're saying is any kid that comes in, they let in, and these are your community kids. Parents that come in and are asking for assistance, they are being directed to Lenisha Penn, who was our program supervisor, who works with them on the payment. That doesn't happen at the center level, that happens at the program supervisor's level.
So, a child in Plateau could, could walk into the Hope Center. Let me just give you an hypothetical, because this, this is some concern, and I have had a couple of calls related to this. Parents may be at home, grandma may be at home, and they leave the house, and they walk up to the community center, to shoot basketball or whatever might be available. What would happen to that child if they didn't want to be a part of the camp? If they didn't need that necessary, the structured part, they just needed to go somewhere for two or three hours in order to be somewhere safe and conducive to learning or safety? What would happen to that child if they walked in and they were not a part of the camp system?
They would need to participate in the activities. So, when you're talking about the staffing?
Yes, ma'am.
The staffing are there with the kids. So, if you have one child that's off doing something that no one else is doing, that's an issue of safety.
Right.
So, when they come in, we tell them, "These are the activities we're doing today," and they need to fall into the activities that are happening for that day.
Fall into the activities, okay. Any other questions, Ms. Smith?
Ms. President?
Mr. Richardson.
I would just like to say, Ms. Smith, could these camps have been staged at Ladd Stadium, maybe the Civic Center, and not in community, community center in first community? It's probably a dynamic community center, because it's there for the community. And these camps seem to mean they can come from wherever to be in the camps. Seems like to me these camps ought to be, out of these, these centers ought to always be there for the community, and no strings attached to it. And these, these structured programs could go to Ladd Stadium, Civic Center, take, can take them out of the community centers, and let the community centers be what the community center's always been. I called the Sullivan Center, I called it myself, and I said, "Listen, I have two children, and I want to bring up there, and can I come up there now?" And he said, "Yes." I said, "He said, "But you would have to pay $50." "$50?" I said, "I don't have no $50." He said, "I am so sorry. Said, "They won't be able to..." I said, "Well, they won't come in, can't come in?" The man told me, "No." I called the Sullivan Center, and that's what they told me, that their children could not come in there unless they had $50 each, is what I was told. And they may have changed that language now, because I put that same information out there in social media. It was told to me, because I didn't think if a mother had four children, she would have to pay $800 a month for those children to participate, based on what I was told. I called. And I'm, I'm not against children paying for these structured programs. I just believe they ought to be outside of a community center, they ought to be in some other facility. Community center ought to be for the community, always for the community, every time for the community. And there ought to be no strings attached, it's for the community, if they can skip rope, it's for the community, if they can do this, it ought to always be for the community. That's my thinking on it, that's how I see it, that's my vision for it, and that's what I was thinking when I set out to get one bill out in Trinity Gardens area.
So, I would request that respectfully, that when you hear those, that like you've done in the past, that you reach out to me, so that we can address it. But I also want to say, when I first started here, one of the first things I did is went out to every community center and held a community engagement meeting. What are you looking for? What do you want? What do you want to see? The number one thing everyone asked for was programming. They wanted more activities. They didn't want free play basketball all day. They didn't want, they wanted structured activities that their kids can come and get additional activities that they wouldn't get. And as they said, we want activities like they have in West Mobile. So, when we bring STEM, when we bring educational activities, we bring art, all of that is structured programming, and we're in the middle of which one do you want?
I think the city ought to put that in its budget, write a instructor program, let the council approve it, don't charge your city, they'll choose them one nickel. Put it in the budget, and they'll pay for it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Mayor City Clerk?
Adoption of the adj-
I'm sorry. We have one more announcement. We have, excuse me, we have Officer of the Month. So, Director, Director Batiste will introduce Officer of the Month.
Morning, Council President and members of the council, mayor. It's my pleasure to read the citation and introduce you to the Officer of the Month, Officer Roderick Miles. During the month of May, Officer Roderick Miles answered 129 calls for service, 68 backings, had eight felony arrests, six misdemeanor arrests, and issued 21 citations. Officer Miles, exceptional personal motivation, compassion, and multifaceted policing skills facilitated several violent criminals being removed from the streets of the City of Mobile. These are just a few of the many accomplishments, accomplishments and professionalisms in his dedication. On May 18th, Officer Miles was patrolling in the area of an apartment complex known for being targeted for vehicle burglaries. He observed suspicious vehicles and attempted to make contact with occupants. Upon approach, the vehicle fled the area. The subjects attempted to elude apprehension and bailed from the vehicle. Officer Miles and the two subject, Officer Miles eventually took the two subjects into custody, and through interview, were able to identify other occupants of the vehicle. During the search of the subjects, incidents to the arrest, he also discovered that both subjects were in possession of marijuana. On May 22nd, 2021, Officer Miles gained intelligence and references several subjects engaging in not only vehicle burglaries, but most recently, a carjacking, in which a firearm was used to take the victim's vehicle. Officer Miles received information that the driver of the carjack vehicle, carjack vehicle was at his mother's residence. He quickly developed a strategy to cover all avenues of egress of the residence and took the subject into custody without further incident. The subject was subsequently arrested and charged with burglary first and robbery first degree. On May 27th, Officer Miles received information that a wanted subject was seen entering a residence in RV Taylor Community. The subject was reported to be possibly armed and dangerous. Officer Miles and his backing officer approached and commanded the scene in making sure innocent, innocent bystanders were free of potential harm, harms way. He established a tactical position while demanding that the wanted subject exit the bedroom with his hands in the air. The subject, the subject complied and was taken into custody without incident. The subject was ultimately arrested on full counts of violation of Sexual Offender Registration and Notification Act, assault second degree, in which the subject stabbed the victim multiple times in unlawful possession of a controlled substance. Officer Miles' instincts and experience have proven to be an invaluable, invaluable member of the Mobile Police Department. He consistently performs, performs at incomparable standard and exhibits true leadership qualities. He exemplifies a professional law enforcement, law enforcement example, as demonstrated by his dedication to the community. Officer Miles consistently goes above and beyond the necessary duties of a police officer to ensure the citizen of Mobile feel, feel safer in the road, feel safer in the road and in his, in their homes. One of the things I did notice about Officer Miles when he was actually talking to the mayor upstairs from minutes ago, the mayor asked him why did he want to be a police officer? And I stepped in at, you know, at the very tail end of it, but he talked about that deal, that it's something that he's always wanted to do, but he never acted on it. And he finally made the decision, the reason he didn't act on it earlier was simply because he didn't- to ensure the citizens of Mobile feel, feel safer in the road, feel safer in the road and in his, in their homes. One of the things I did notice about Officer Miles when he was actually talking to the mayor upstairs from minutes ago, uh, the mayor asked him why did he, he want to be a police officer? And I stepped in at, you know, at the very tail end of it, but he talked about that deal, that it's something that he's always wanted to do, but he never acted on it. And he finally made the decision, the reason he didn't act on it earlier was simply because he didn't think he was mature enough to do the job. And at some point, he came to grips with the idea that, hey, you know, I can do this job. And he's only been with the department about a year and a half. Uh, in these times that we live in now, for young people like Officer Miles to make the decision to protect and serve the citizens of our community is commendable, and it really speaks to the, to the dedication that he has to want to make sure that the streets and the citizens of Mobile are safer for our community to live in. So congratulations to Officer Miles, Officer Miles. I asked him if he wanted to say any words, he said, no, sir.
Thank you so much for your service.
Ms., Ms. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I would like to, um, state, um, thanks, uh, to Ms. Smith for coming down and explaining the situation to us. And I do understand, you know, Councilman Richardson's concern. Um, I would say, since Ms. Smith had been aboard, um, she really had turned parks and recs around. And, um, you know, next summer, maybe we can, you know, look at something or, you know, different and probably work with the budget and, you know, try to reduce some things. But, um, Ms. Smith had really had changed parks and rec around a lot. Um, the mayor had mentioned about, you know, Saturday at the Coop. And, um, for years, I had advocated that we are underutilizing, uh, Cooper Riverside Park. Uh, we have a beautiful park, beautiful waterway, river, and everything. And we should have some type of, you know, um, vendors and stuff out there and, you know, and celebrate, you know, what we have. And I have stated that, you know, a couple of times in public meetings. And as the mayor has stated, um, this past Saturday, we had the, um, Saturday at the Coop. And it was just like what I had visionary that what, you know, what Mobile should be doing. Uh, with that being said, that, you know, over in, uh, Spanish Fort, they have the, uh, Fort Container, where they have different vendors out there, you know, selling different food and different items and everything. But they just enclose, you know, out there at, on the Cooper Side River Park, you know, not only that they had, um, food trucks that's out there that you can go and purchase, you know, it's also live band, uh, different bands, um, catered to all types of music. And, uh, citizens that was present on this past Saturday really enjoyed it. Uh, many people came and left because they did not, you know, bring a chair to go, you know, to, you know, come and sit in, you know, at the, uh, park. I really believe that, uh, as the word get out, that, that, um, Saturday at the Coop is really going to be really big and popular here in the city of Mobile. But I would like to ask Ms. Smith to make sure that, that you're seeing the council like a PDF, uh, advertising the, uh, Saturday at the Coop, what we could put into our newsletter for the citizens of Mobile can really know what's going on in our city. But again, thank you so much for what you have been doing for the parks and rec, uh, throughout the city of Mobile.
I, I totally agree with Council Vice President Small. Outstanding job on the part of Ms. Smith in revitalizing, uh, our parks and rec. Many times, they were just vacant open buildings, running air in the summer, heating the winter with no activity. And you have totally turned that around. And, uh, as it relates to inner child in District Two, if they show up at one of our community centers and don't have the fifty dollars, if your, uh, staff would let you know so that you could let me know, I don't mind for this particular summer covering that expense through my discretionary funds. I don't want any child to come there and not be able to participate wholly, not necessarily have to do some extra in order to participate. So if you get a firm number, uh, from our area, as to how many kids are showing up that need that assistance, let me know, and I don't mind, uh, relaying those, defraying those costs this particular year. Thank you.
Councilmember Rich?
Thank you. I've been given this proclamation, it's my honor to read it. Whereas myosinograbis, also known as MG, is a rare autoimmune neuromuscular disorder characterized by fluctuating weaknesses of the voluntary muscle groups. And whereas myosinograbis can occur regardless of your race, gender, or age, and it is estimated that twenty in a hundred thousand have myosinograbis, and it's often remains undiagnosed. And whereas myosinograbis does have treatments, but most patients live with many limitations. And whereas myosinograbis has many support, resources, educational programming, as well as social and recreational activities to help, but until there's a cure, there's each other. And whereas now, therefore, we, members of the Mobile City Council and the mayor, do hereby proclaim June as Myosinograbis Awareness Month in Mobile, and urge all citizens to join us to focus on the need for education, treatment, research, and ultimately, a cure for this currently incurable disease. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Adoption of the agenda?
Second?
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Appeals, we have requests for waiver, waiver of the noise ordinance on June the eighteenth in Langen Park, August the eighth, on, at Tom, um, Cooper Riverside Park, June nineteenth at Municipal Park, July seventeenth on Riverside Drive, July twenty-second in Cooper Riverside Park, and June nineteenth on Conception Street, South Conception Street.
So move?
I'm second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Jennifer Trulie.
Good morning, city council members and Mayor Stimson. My name's Jennifer Trulie, I'm the volunteer director for the Tunnel to Towers, um, local run here in Mobile. Um, and I've come this morning to ask for, um, partnership and, um, support from the city of Mobile to help, um, make our local run here on nine eleven.
Ms. Trulie, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, sir. Three zero zero four Bryant Road, that's B-R-Y-A-N-T, Mobile, Alabama, three six six zero five.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, so we would like to ask for partnership and support, um, for this run from the city to make it a success. The, uh, Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation, um, was started in, on, um, excuse me, in two thousand and one after, um, the attack on our towers. Stephen Siller was a local firefighter, New York firefighter. He had just gotten off of work when he heard what was going on. He turned his car around and got as far as the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel. Um, traffic was stopped there. He strapped on sixty pounds of gear and ran through the tunnel to the towers and gave his life, saving others. His family started that foundation that year to, um, support our first responders. Um, they have several programs, and ninety-three percent of the funds go directly to those programs. They are the Smart Home Program. Uh, the foundation custom builds, um, specially adapted mortgage-free smart homes for catastrophically injured service members. Uh, the Fallen First Responder Program, they pay off mortgages of families of law enforcement officers and firefighters who are killed in the line of duty, um, with, with young children. Stephen Siller had five young children. And the Gold Star Family Home Program, um, honors the legacy of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving our country, providing the surviving spouses and young children with mortgage-free homes. Um, so this is the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. Um, the run will be on nine eleven at the Battleship Park. Um, and we think it'll be a really big event this year, um, and would love to see partnership with the city. Um, we've provided hats to you guys and, um, pins and some, the, the fact page, which has got the information that I was talking about, also their, um, spring newsletter. And, um, thank y'all for your time, and appreciate y'all.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you have a budget in mind that you're shooting for to do this program?
Yes, ma'am, I do, and I did not bring it with me, and I apologize. Um, I can get any information to you-
Okay.
-that you would like.
Great. I would appreciate that.
Yes.
I, I imagine all council people might be interested in getting that information-
Yes, ma'am. Um, is there an email address that I could, um...
If, if you go council one with the numeral, and then council two, council three, council four, council five-
Yes, sir.
-six, and then seven-
Okay.
-and then at cityofmobile, all one word, dot org.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Just have Ed send it to me. Have Mr. Murphy send it to me.
Oh, yes, sir.
Share it with the administration and the council.
Yes, sir.
But I thought there was a, a ballpark figure that you were, um, hoping to, um, receive in order to bring this event to Mobile, because there is a certain cost to the foundation.
Yes, sir. Um, I didn't come here with a number in mind. Um, all that is needed to have a run in any city is a volunteer director, um, squad members, volunteers. Trish Reed is here with me today. Um, and we just work with the foundation in New York. So, um, and Ed had this, um, run for several years-
Yeah.
-and he sends his apologies. He had a-
It was great.
-emergency this morning, otherwise he would be here. But yes, it was, the run was, has always been a very exciting and, um...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Daniel Henderson?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, city council staff members. My name is Daniel Henderson. I, um, am representing the address of ten forty Dolphin Island Parkway. Uh, recently, the city has taken action on this property to, um, to, um, to demo this property. Uh, this is, uh, the old Phoenix Apartments that we have been doing work on for the past three years. I had spoken with you all three years ago to start work on that project. Unfortunately, now that my project, you know, who could, who could have foreseen this past year, year and a half of what we had? And so we had to stop work on our project, and now that my project now is a city nuisance. I have no issue, no gripe on the city wanting to move forward with demolishing, uh, some of those buildings, but the city wants to do all of the buildings. I am in disagreement with that. You all have seen my work here in the city, I have turned some of the worst areas into the nice areas in Mobile, um, anywhere from Trinity Gardens, from Richardson Heights, the old Murray Hill, Duvaldi Estates, and now the old Phoenix, uh, Apartments. I'm just asking that, that we have the opportunity to resume work. I'm not trying to stop the city, I am aware of the buildings that need to be torn down. I'm just saying that all the buildings don't need to be torn down. I want to see the, I want to see this project through, I would like to see it grow. I have built nineteen new homes in the back, there are nineteen brand-new families in the back, and we have fifteen other projects going right now. We're just at a standstill due to COVID. There's hard, we couldn't find work. I lost my office manager to COVID, I lost my yardkeeper to COVID. So this, this has been a trying year on trying to get staff and get people back to work on getting our city back great. I'm just asking the city and the city council to include me on the plans on demolishing some of these buildings, not all. I tried to pull permits, but I can't pull permits to do my work now because that there's a, there's a lean or there's a hold on me doing, able to do my work. I'm just asking that you guys consider this, because I don't want the city to pick up a bill of about three hundred thousand dollars on something that I possibly can't pay. So just take that in mind, and that's all I have to say on this behalf. Any questions?
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you for, uh, coming down. Um, yeah, a couple of months ago, the city did declare, um, this property a nuisance, and then from my understanding, and Mr. Davis is available, um, not all of, is Mr. Davis here? Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, all the buildings are not, not, it's not all the buildings that came before us to be demolished.
Correct.
It's just a couple of bills, a couple buildings from my understanding. But, um, you know, Mobile especially, the district that I represent, is in need of affordable homes, very desperate, very, 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 very desperate. But I promise you, every week, every week, I get a porch about those apartments on DIP. Every week. I can't even go to Walmart, went to Walmart one night masked up, residents stopped me, Mr. Small, you know, and the first thing they started talking about was those apartments. Um, there's a lady, um, Ms. Calhoun, she just purchased a building that's door to the church, and she was saying, Mr. Small, can we do something about these apartments?
I sold her that building. I sold her the building.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you what she told me.
Mm-hmm.
And, "Mr. Small, can we do something about those apartments?" You know, "Those apartments are trying to beautify this corner," and, um, she said, "We've got to do something about those apartments." The residents are beating me up weekly, you know, and, um, and again, um, the city is not demoing all the apartments, and from my understanding, and, um, the, the ones in the back are looking good. But I just, you know, keep on encouraging you to go ahead and keep investing, because again, we are in desperate need of affordable homes, uh, here in the city of Mobile, especially in my district and everything. But, you know, the citizens are, are crying desperately, you know, for, um, help for trying to beautify the area and everything.
May I respond to that?
I, I think your, your time might, where, where are we on time, Ms. Merchant? Pardon me?
Just expired.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Henderson, your time has expired. But I know you and Councilman Small will, will continue in dialogue on this particular property. Uh, he's worked on several properties in my district, so I know firsthand that he has a heart for preservation, a heart for revitalization, and I'm hoping that this project, uh, will, will be in that same vein. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kenny Owen?
Good morning, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak on my behalf and my neighbors as well. Uh, my address is two zero seven Mohawk Street. My concern is the children on Mohawk Street.
Two, two zero seven what now?
Mohawk Street.
Mohawk, yes, sir.
We have three speed bumps coming down Mohawk Street. From the time you get past Imogene, there's one speed bump left. And from Imogene to Old Government is a drag strip. There's six kids live across the street from me, one kid lives here. It's not a matter of if somebody's going to get killed or hurt, it's when. Everybody who's familiar with Midtown knows Mohawk is a cut-through street, that's understandable. But we've got to protect the citizens there. And as far as, I think our police department does an excellent job. The only presence that the police is on Mohawk is the cut-through from the third precinct to headquarters, which is normal, that's fine. But the sound ordinance, manual windows vibrate at three o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, six o'clock at night, it's... I contacted Council Rich, Richardson. He said that he's addressed us with the council, nothing's ever been done about it. After that conversation, we started talking about the park on Stanton Road and the sidewalks on O'Shea Road, and he informed me that the mayor quote-unquote said he will not put another speed bump in the city of Mobile.
He's right over here, too.
Sorry?
He's right there.
No, he isn't. But I'm really concerned about the kids. Like I said, it's not if it happens, it's when it happens. I mean, literally, I guarantee you, there would have been people went to jail for reckless driving from that one-eighth of a mile, because they will come from Clearmont all the way to Old Government, run the red light at Old Government just to get to Airport Boulevard.
Mr., Mr. Director of Public Safety, can you, can you speak to his issue? You came around, it, it's a serious issue.
I don't know, I, I can speak to all of his issues, but what I, I can tell you is that I will have a traffic study done in the area that he's speaking of to try to give you an idea of what the, uh, the volume of traffic and the speed in that area there. And as you know, we do traffic enforcement throughout the city. As far as the, uh, as far as speed bumps, uh- As far as the, as far as speed bumps, it's my understanding that that is before the legal department to help the city make a decision whether or not they want to continue to put speed bumps in. I know that's been something that a lot of council members have asked about, in particular, Councilwoman Gregory. So when we, when the city makes a decision, how are we going to proceed with that? And we will address speed bumps throughout the city.
And I understand, Mr. Batiste, that y'all can't have a police officer sitting there on Mohawk Street every day. I understand that totally.
What I'll do is I'll give you my card. I am getting ready to leave. I'll give you my card, and you'll reach out to me specifically, and you and I'll have a conversation, and we'll proceed from there. Yes, sir.
Thank y'all so much for y'all's time.
Mr. President. We have been working with legal and traffic engineering about this exact issue, the types of speed control, be it traffic circles or speed bumps. And so we do have a policy that's under final review, that we are looking at to standardize exactly under what circumstances and what process needs to occur in order for traffic engineering and everybody to agree to the type of device used to calm traffic. So I think you will see that forthcoming from the administration, probably within the next month.
That'd be great.
Mr. President. Director Batiste is right. I have been advocating for various neighborhoods to get some traffic calming in the neighborhoods, and in the coming CIP, I have already let everybody know that I intend to put some money aside. So I'm happy to hear that we're looking at some sort of standardized version of the traffic calmer, because we see different types all over town. So as soon as we get that, I think we can move forward. And what I have been telling my residents is you have to fill out the survey, seventy percent of the people on the street have to agree, because that was the most recent policy. So we have sent out several of these surveys, and I know I still have some already in-house that are awaiting some sort of decision by traffic engineering as to where to put the specific traffic calmer. So whatever information we can get to them, and the sooner the better. Chief, I really appreciate it, and thank you for pushing this through, and for the director also, because I also email him and talk with him quite a bit, when I get emails and calls from residents who are concerned about traffic and traffic issues within the neighborhoods.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Last instruction I received on traffic calming devices was that the city was not putting any more down from the administration. As a matter of fact, in Midtown, where USA just built a America facility on O'Shea Road right across from Publix, and the people on the side street wanted common devices. And they had been promised those common devices before I heard anything about no more common devices. So they were told that, the residents, they were told that there would be no common devices, no matter how much traffic that that building generated. And I referred them to the administration. Doesn't matter for the administration to take up, council members can't put down, order to put down, we don't have no instructions to, or anybody to put down traffic, traffic common devices. The traffic engineer told us that she finally got permission to put one traffic calmer down, but to make it clear that this is it, that the city was not putting down any more common devices. So when people called me to say, "I would like to have a traffic calming device," I said, "The mayor and his administration decided that there would be no more traffic common devices." And that's what I told that young man, that when he called me about one, that it is the decision of the administration and the mayor that there will be no more traffic calming devices. So if you all are going to start back doing that, I think you're going to find a welcoming council we would never fall getting rid of. So if you are planning on starting that back up, we certainly would be interested in that.
If I could comment.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. My office has been approached by citizens, particularly in one neighborhood that had one side of it placed and the other side was for future and has never been done. My office just automatically sent them to traffic engineer because of the, you know, getting the, what was it, seventy percent, I think, had to agree that fronted the location and had to have a study done and whatnot. I was always hopeful that the city would understand the need for traffic management, be it, you know, something that's a passive thing or something that's more aggressive, like the circles or just rerouting traffic. It's something that really does affect residential quality of life. So I'm glad to see the momentum, and the sooner the council gets it, especially going into the next budget cycle, if there are funds, working with the traffic engineering department to find out what would be needed to be isolated and then labeled as such, because there is definitely a need for neighborhoods to have this management plan in place. It'd really help their stability of their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich.
Wesley Young.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Wesley Young. I reside at 3058 Jane Street, Mobile, Alabama. As I was sitting here this morning, I saw a rosy picture painted about the Mobile Public Service workers. That was not the case. I'm here to address that this morning, because we've been having problems picking up trash. We're having problems picking up garbage. We're having problems in parking wreck as well. In the garbage department, we don't have equipment to do the job nor the personnel. There are several trucks in that department that's approaching 100,000 miles, and some are more than 100,000 miles. No equipment is being bought for those departments. Trash department, there are six operators behind right now, and then yesterday, six trucks came in, and they had an electrical problem with the new trucks. They didn't marry up with the old trucks, so they had to send them back, so we're back where we were last week with no trucks to do the job. These employees are working ten, twelve hours a day, sunup to sundown, and they've been doing that. Parking recreation, the recreation centers are dealing with one person in a recreation center. That person's supposed to take a lunch break, and four hours, some days, you have to work through the lunch hours, and they're having problems in that recreation department. If something would happen to one of those people that's within that department, that particular day in that recreation center, there's nobody to be able to tell anyone else unless the kids or somebody in there be there to tell them something happened to them, that they're injured or get sick. So this rosy picture is not what it says it is. We need to look at these departments and public service. They have been neglected for seven and a half years. They have inadequate pay, inadequate personnel, inadequate equipment. It needs to stop, it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed now. When you have a city that can't provide basic city services, then you have a non-existent city. So it's something that you need to look into. Mr. President, I submit to you today, something has gone wrong in Mobile, and it needs to be fixed.
Reggie Hill.
Mr. President, while he's coming, I thought the six trucks was out there in the field. But they're not operational.
To the best of my knowledge, they're all operational. They were received from them all with functions checks, from the manufacturer, the vendors that we received them from. So that's the report I got on Friday.
Okay, well, this morning, we just heard that those trucks were not functioning.
I also heard that trucks with 100,000 miles need to be replaced. You know, every car I own has over 100,000 miles. Heavy trucks go hundreds of thousands of miles typically, so...
I'm struck many concern about the new trucks, that they're all out there in the field working.
Mr. President, let's let Reggie talk. He's been here a long time.
Thank you, I'm a city clerk, Mr. President, members of the council, to the mayor, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street, and in that long wait, is glad to be back down here. So it feels good to be in this part of the arena. I arrived today to address three particular issues, the UDC, public purpose funds, and available resources. It's just interesting in the days that have led up to this and even our meeting today, where all these matters are very relevant to what we're facing. For the sake of time, I'm going to have someone from the SRTF staff email you the findings that we have gathered throughout each of the districts regarding implementation of the UDC. But what I will say, I want to commend Ms. Biko for even taking the challenge, looking at this. Zoning is a very serious issue here. But I will say this to what I heard when I was at the committee meeting, though these things are stated as archaic or out of date, the zoning practices that are in place now actually protect the smaller guys. They actually protect some of those non-private organizations that don't have opportunity to the same access and capital resource. And this is something that we need to look at. When we look at the brick and mortar piece as well, if the way that it's designed, if it was to be approved like that, some organizations wouldn't have the opportunity to grow, because all those organizations just come in and bully them and get them out of the way. And this is something that needs to be addressed as well. I pray that we will not allow an administration, regardless who is in office, to have complete control over the zone. That was referenced by one of our council members, was probably the most pertinent information that was provided during that meeting. The council has to be a part of this, and we're seeing the challenges still from the Zog Act today. It's like we still don't have an understanding clearly of what this is. This is a strong council, weak mayor, formal government. It's very unique. We don't see this everywhere. And for some reason, we're not implementing it properly, but moving on. Public purpose funds, the way I understand it, if there's a correction that I need to know, please let me know, but we go through the finance department. The finance department, they clear it, they send it to the council. The council then either votes it up or votes it down. Then after they does that, it goes to legal, then it goes to the mayor's office. Now, I don't have any understanding as to why there's not a same protocol for all organizations, but it seems that specific groups have different criterias to meet for something that has been approved by the council. Now, I'm going to send more information on that as well, so we'll have to discuss all this in this open setting. But this is something that we seriously need to look at, and these are things that are defined directly by our ordinances and a simple act. And the last piece, because this is very interesting, too, we have organizations who recognize when the schools are closed, there's no accessibility. The times for the recreation centers are closed, there's no accessibility. Usually when these horrific acts are happening within our community, it's in the idle times where they have nothing to do. And we have organizations that want to step in and fill the gap of what's happening, and these are free services. I don't have the time to speak on what I, I just can't believe what I heard today. We are charging children to go into our community centers. It's very familiar with all this stuff. We had a contract before, we wanted to take $500,000. Then, before it even got to the council agenda to be approved, application board was already closed. We also had a group of young people came out here and said, "We want to utilize the facility." And then the facility, because you would be too hostile and violent, you can't get in there. So now we're finding other ways to keep them out. Now, that might not be true, that might not be the basis of what it is, but that's definitely something that it looks like, and we need to be considerate of all that. So thank you for hitting the floor. Hopefully, we can have some type of response, but if there's anything like in the past, remember, these are taxpayer dollars.
Resolutions held over. There are no objections, I'll take all of these together. 08435, approve purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products for 50 decorative aluminum sign posts. 09436, allocate monies to Capital Project Traffic Signal Generators. 21437, authorize service contract with SNO Enterprises for security and fire alarm monitoring at various city facilities. 21438, authorize contract with SC Stagner Contracting for Fire Station Number 16.
Some move.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
I just have a question about the generators, if I may. And the question is, I thought I understood that there would be 55 intersections where these generators would be placed. Am I that correct?
That's correct. It's approximately 55.
Is there a formula that will be used on what qualifies a intersection to get the generator, like number of vehicles that pass it, or?
That's right. We're going with major intersections right now, so we're trying to get to...
Based on volume?
Yeah, and I remember looking at the list, Dolphin and I-65 is like a very high priority for us to get that intersection up as quickly as possible.
Do you know how long it will take to get these generators to the city and, you know, ready to go in a power outage, a long stemming power, not just like a thunderstorm that sets something off, correct? It's got to be like a storm? Is there a certain criteria for when they would be rolled out?
If we have power outages, we would immediately begin to mobilize that, depending on the damage or the anticipated return power by Alabama Power, they usually would be able to notify us how long it would take to get back online. And so, there were recent storms, the power was out at my house, and they gave us a specific time that it should be back on. So if it's prolonged, then those generators would be deployed to a major intersection.
So you'll have a, like, a protocol for when you would roll them out, correct?
Yes, ma'am, but again, prolonged...
And you said policing personnel would bring them, or the electrical department? Is it something that can sit in the back of a squad car? I mean, I'm just trying to tell people or let them know.
What we, the concept is to have a customized utility trailer closed in...
I see.
...that has the shelving in it to store the generators, that would be able to move quickly to the intersections and be able to deploy the specific generators throughout the city.
When do you expect them to arrive in the city?
You know, we're on standby. Again, we're hoping that we can move forward with the funding so that we can encumber the money. I believe that there are some of them through a local vendor that are already being held for us. I don't know if it's all 55, but we can certainly move forward just as quickly as the council approves this.
Yes, well, no, I'm just trying to get this information out to people. So it's a pretty quick turnaround?
It is, yes. Now, the other component of that is the transfer switches that have to go into the boxes at every intersection that we're going to, and that's underway through electrical.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, I appreciate it, because people were asking. I had talked about that we laid the item over, but I didn't have a lot of details about it, so I'd like to just give some more information. So we're in the hurricane season now, so you anticipate that, God forbid, we get something bad as far as a hurricane, some of these will be able to roll out.
That's right, and again, we're picking the highest priority intersections, and then we'll work our way to the less, you know...
And we have more than 55 intersections, so...
That's correct, but our big thing is to get those major intersections up and rolling, and then we can continue this program. But it's, we did do the proof of concept after the storms last year.
And it's money that comes in from 9/11, right? It's some kind of payback to the city for the...
It's surplus money out of the Mobile County EMA, to which the county and the city are the major contributors to that budget. And so that money was pro-rata returned to the different contributors to Mobile County EMA.
You can make it a revolve, you know, a revolving type program then, to have it so that we would be pretty well wired up eventually in a bad storm.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 46440 through 6442.
Yeah, motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for consent resolution being introduced, 46-440 through 60-442.
Sir. Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
46440, give South Dr. Thomas Avenue the honorary designation of Greater Pine Grove Way. 6441, determine an appropriation to the Bay Area Women's Coalition, Inc. serves a public purpose and approved payment.
Some move.
Okay, we've got, yeah. We're going to not read the other one? We're tabling.
No, this is going to be tabled.
That's okay.
Is there a second?
Yes, there was.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
6442, determine an appropriation to Sandtown Community Action Group, serves a public purpose and approved payment.
Move to table.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. And just as an explanation, the community group has asked that instead of providing the funding to them directly, that the city pay for the invoices that will come up because of a marker that we are helping them with. So it will just, it will still come from my discretionary account, but we will pay for that directly instead.
All right, table.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time. 08443 through 6459.
By council rule, these resolutions will be laid over one week.
Call for public hearings. 41460, call for public hearing to consider the vacation of a seven and a half foot drainage and utility easement in Mont Lamar Office Park Subdivision, scheduled July 20. 41461, call for public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of Pearl Street, Lion Street, Hospital Street, and Basil Street, scheduled July 20.
Council colleagues, I'd ask that we would table this item, item 41461.
Oh, I'll take that one separate then.
And the reason?
Do what?
Pardon me?
I'm not sure. I didn't understand what do...
He wants to table it.
I would like to table this item.
And the...
41461.
Okay.
Can you help?
Yeah, can you tell us why?
Pardon me?
What is the reason we're tabling?
Well, I need to have some outreach with the citizens in this particular area being impacted. And I expressed that to the pertinent parties when it was brought to my attention. And so now that it's on the agenda, this is pretty much the option that I have.
It's the one for Bishop State?
It's the very last item on the agenda.
Right.
To call for the public hearing, so...
Pearl Street, Lion Street, Hospital Street.
Okay.
Basil Street.
And table, or do you want a date certain to bring it back, or?
I'll have that, is this, I'll have that information, the date certain, probably by the end of the day. I don't have one in particular now.
I understand. No, I want to work with you.
Yes, ma'am. And I would appreciate that.
So should we just lay it over a week, and then you'll have a timeline?
That'll be fine. That would be absolutely fine.
Is that...
Let's lay it over one week, colleagues, and we'll have the particulars worked out between now and next week.
Okay. And then you'll have an idea of when it can come back, or whatever?
Say what now?
So you're saying by next week, you'll be able to give us a date if it's, that you would like to hear the public hearing?
That's exactly what I'm saying, Ms. Rich.
Okay.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Other than that, I'm for tabling. But hearing that there's some concern amongst my colleagues, I'm willing to lay it over a week.
All right. Mr. President?
Mr. Williams?
I'm going to be completely respectful in this. I do know it's in your district, but this was previously discussed. And I just simply want to be able to face, you know, Dr. Sykes and say, I'm still keeping my word, even though I told you after, you know, talking to my colleagues that, you know, that there was no problem. So I just wanted to be clear, because I will call him when I walk out. It's a matter of public safety, these vacations. And I understand there's some questions, and I'm certainly willing to wait as long as the administration and the representation of the district feels necessary. Thank you.
And I'm completely respectful of that same association. I've had those same discussions with Dr. Sykes, and we want to see the progress that Bishop State continue. We also want to make certain that things that we do are in harmony with the community. So I'm asking that we would lay this item over one week.
Good. Okay.
And then we take it up next week, and we'll have our final direction. At that point, after we've kind of had an opportunity to talk to everyone again, to make certain we're on the same page.
Sounds good. Okay, so we'll take 41460, the call for public hearing to consider the vacation of a seven and a half foot drainage and utility easement in Mont Lamar Office Park Subdivision, scheduled July 20.
Some move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And now, 41461, calling for public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of Pearl Street, Lion Street, Hospital Street, and Basil Street, scheduled July 20.
Over one week. Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements. Ms. Rich?
All right, Mr. President. Thank you so much. I got a chance to attend Quick Death on Saturday. It's an outstanding event. It showcased the diamond we have down at Lake Drive Tri-Centennial Park. And many people I talked to had no idea why we named the park Tricentennial Park. We opened it up in 2002. Mobile was organized in 1702. So it was the 300th year anniversary of the city. So we named the park Tricentennial Park in honor of the 300th year anniversary of the city. And it surfaced, when it comes down to non-sports parks on the, east of I-65, it just surfaced as probably the premier non-sports park, east of I-65, outstanding park. There's plenty of people out there, and it was a grand event. I also got a chance to attend Art Walk. And, man, it's gone again. Okay, so, Ms. Smith, I had some people who had children, and they were trying to get them out there with, they had scooters and not skates, and they were not permitted. Obviously, that's something that you all can look at. I mean, how couldn't they do any harm with a scooter?
So if we allow scooters, that mean we have to allow all people with scooters? So you have the electric scooters trying to get in there? And so, we're trying to work out, probably do a pre-hour or something from six to seven they can come in.
Okay.
But it's only for regular skate. It's only four wheels or inline skates. If you watch even now, most of the skaters are over each other because of the abilities. If we allow someone to come in on those, what do they call, push scooters, it's a major safety issue.
Okay. All right. They asked me about it, and I told them I raised the issue. So that's all I'm doing. We have authorized spending of $4 million to upgrade streetlights on I-10 and I-65, and I haven't seen any action. It's dark on major sections of those two interstates. So how long would it, y'all think it's going to be before they start with the lights?
It's been authorized, the $2 million, I think you said four, I think you meant two.
Two, okay.
Yeah. And we have to award the work, which means it'll come back through here for your approval, for award. So we had to then, once the money was there, then we had to send it out for bid, and then get the bids, review the bids. Then it comes back here to you for approval to award the bid. Then the contractor has to order the supplies, and then mobilize and start the work.
No.
It's a process. And it's a process that's deliberate, and every project goes through that same process.
No, I'm trying to say, how far are we from having it bid it off?
I'm sorry?
No, how far are we from having it bid it off?
We've received the bids. We're now reviewing them, and then it'll come back to you for approval.
Okay, you already got the bids. All right, okay. Figures Park, contract approved in April, and no work has begun at Figures Park.
That's not true.
What's that?
Work has taken place at Figures Park. There's been demolition that's taken place on facilities there. There's been work being done, concrete ramps are being put in. There's work happening out there.
On the, regarding the 800,000 upgrade?
For all, I don't know if someone else is, Shonda's got some answers too. But I will tell you that since NTP was issued, demolition of the pool houses occurred. That was the first priority to take place.
Houses?
The pool, the pool. There was a pool facility, right. That was, that's been, I mean, your statement that nothing has happened is not accurate. That contractor's been working out there at that project. The, so that pool house was demolished. Last week, the ADA ramps were constructed, providing better accessibility to the community center. And the entrance was formed with concrete, and is being poured this week. So all of that work has been taking place at that facility.
Okay. So the contractor's at work?
He's been at work.
Okay. I haven't seen it, anything. All right. I'm glad to know that. I think that's it, Mr. President.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to again thank the Parks Department and all the people that pulled together to make sure that the splash pad spray ground was open, because I know it's busting with people, and they were desiring to go. So thank you so much for that. And I'd like to remind people that the Mobile Fire Department is having smoke detectors that can be installed. There's a number to call, and it's for anybody in our city to take advantage of this. I think you get on a list. But anyway, that number is 208-7484. Again, 208-7484. And they actually come out and install the smoke detector. And we've had some lives lost. I don't know if a smoke detector was missing or whatever, but be prepared. And this certainly is a very good program that everyone could be taking part of, and I thank them for their tenacity with this. It was done in the past, and I think it was very successful in the past as well. The libraries, when one is talking about a program for kids, if you go to any one of the libraries within our city services, you will find that there are so many programs for adults, for teens, and for children. Call the nearest library to you. If you have transportation, you can even call the other libraries around. And you'll find that they are very creative programs. And I think if your child is old enough, you probably can drop them off to participate in that program. If they're younger, they probably need you nearby. But again, this is something where, this is a resource, and I hope that people take advantage, especially in the summer months when it's very hot, for being outside. Come to the libraries and take advantage of those wonderful programs. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank the administration, Ms. Smith, and also Ms. Conchero, for coming out this past Saturday at Tremere Park. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new basketball court and also the playground equipment. And this is just the first of many phases that Tremere Park is going to go through in the next couple of years. Tremere Park has been a park that has been neglected for many years, especially because of funding and not being located in a community block developer grant area. And so with the CIP, we were able to promote and push money into that park. Many great things that's going to come to Tremere Park. And Saturday, pretty much was, you know, telling the citizens, hey, we have not forgot about you. We here, you know, with you to make this park the best thing ever. One of the constituents in the area had came up to me and said, Mr. Small, we never thought anything was going to ever happen to this park. But I just told him, I said, the best is yet to come. And just tell him the citizens in DIP, not only for Tremere Park, but for Arrow Park in District 3, the best is yet to come. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Waver?
Thank you very much. This past Saturday, I joined a great group of youngsters at the Hillsdale Recreation Center for a basketball camp that was, that I helped sponsor, but it was also sponsored by Jason Caffey. And just a terrific, successful camp. We had representatives there from Bridging the Gap with the Mobile Police Department. Some elite coaches were there to actually put on the camp. Jason said he was really there as an assistant. But the whole thing was done so very well. And what I was also very impressed with was how the Recreation Center looked, as well as the whole footprint with the fields, the parking lot, everything. And Shonda came by. Shonda was very busy on Saturday. And I told her the same thing, that all of the recent improvements that we have made at Hillsdale are terrific. Everything looks so much better. I can remember walking through the Rec Center with some members of the HOA detailing all of the different things that needed to be taken care of. And they've been done, and it really looks terrific. Everything was great. Shonda, thank you so much. Also, on Saturday, I went over to the Vaccine Clinic at St. John's United Methodist Church on Overlook Road. That was our second dose clinic. Of course, if you still needed a first dose, you could get those too. We've had three vaccine clinics in my district, and I'm just very grateful for all of the volunteers who helped put this on. Of course, it's USA Health, the city of Mobile in particular, and then the host where we have been, which is Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, St. John's, and of course, Smith Memorial AME. So thank you to everyone who has been a part of these clinics. And last, I just want to let everybody know, if you see some folks out in Langen Park on the lake itself, and they look like they're doing something really weird with a pole, that's because they are doing something called a bathymetric survey. They are taking a look out there to really study what's under the water, what's on the floor, very similar to topographic maps that you see. What we're looking for is information on the conditions, and actually what's down on the bottom of the lake, the depth of the organic material, all those kinds of things, so that they will better know how to do the dredging and what to do with all of the organic materials. So this is getting ready for the dredging, which I'm very excited about. So if you do see somebody out there with something that looks like a long pole, that's what they're doing. We'll get some pictures and share those with everyone in the district as soon as possible. So just thank you, Mr. President, and that's all from District 7.
Thank you, Ms. Waver. Mr. Williams?
He left.
Oh, God. That concludes any announcements from, well, there's a skeleton down there too. All right. Do I hear a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Wow.
Pardon me?
It's a good one.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Everybody's, okay. Is the motion in second to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.